Sacramento. Very delegate assembly.
Sorry about that.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order, May 14th, at 10:01, and we'll start with opening ceremonies led by Martha.
Forgot the moment of reflection. Are you reflecting now? Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we, I guess.
Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Metoyer?
Here.
Ms. Fleur?
Here.
Mr. Davenport. Ms. Franco?
Here.
Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey?
Here.
Dr. Navarro?
Here.
Okay, and then I need a motion for the adoption of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Ms. Franco and seconded by Ms. Metoyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Community input, I have one card. If Ruth Kobayashi, if she would like to come up.
Good morning, thank you.
Good morning.
My name is Ruth Kobayashi, I'm a CDM parent, and it's a pleasure to be here not asking for approval of lights and turf fields at our high school.
Feelings mutual.
As you may know, I have an older daughter that's graduated from CDM, a sophomore in college, and one student who will be at CDM for another month and a few days and graduating this June. Thank you for engaging, community, excuse me, Challenge Success and this important program. A couple of you may know this, but I am with another parent who's actually a modern-day parent who lives in Newport Beach, creating a parent discussion program, unaffiliated, just informal and organic, for the community at large, and as I've requested before, it would be helpful, at the appropriate time, to receive key findings and recommendations from the program for parents, to target our discussions consistent with the recommendations made to the schools. The culture in our homes is probably the most critical piece of any solutions going forward, and the more we can be aligned with the district and speaking common language in its direction from Challenge Success, the more effective we can be together. Finally, whoops, I left it back there, but I'll bring it to you later. I've brought with me the latest edition of the CDM High School Magazine Trident, and the entire issue is about the kids, their feelings, their experiences at CDM. Respectfully, I'd encourage you all to read this one, which I'll leave with you, or I can bring you additional copies later in the week, as it gives you a true window, the good, the bad, and the otherwise, of what many students say life is like on the campus, and I think it would be just really insightful. So thank you again for doing this, and I'm glad to be here to take some notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Thanks for your help with all this as well. Is the newsletter online? Is it on the website?
I'll find out.
Okay.
Excuse me, may I?
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
Mrs. Snell?
I'm sorry.
A few of us received a letter today from a young, a student, an 11th grader, and I would like to send it and have it put into the record, because I don't know whether we have permission to share it.
Yes.
I would love to be able to share it in its entirety, but I want to make sure we have permission first, and so I would, but I would like it to go into the record that we have received a very touching, thoughtful, and provoking letter from an 11th grade student at Corona Del Mar. So, if I may.
Okay, we'll do that. Every, I'm sure everybody, okay, everybody saw the letter, good. Okay, so moving on to the report. Dr. Navarro?
Well, I'm honored and pleased to have met in person today Margaret Dunlap. We've spoken on the phone several times, and, you know, she kind of helped me, talked me off a cliff, the edge of a cliff, and so glad that she's here. She's been working in our district and made her way to the third school, I think, today. But really, I'd like to introduce Russell, who's now, in his role of safety, is taking over the leadership and the coordination of the work being done by Challenge Success in the district. Mr. Lee Sung?
Yes, I'm really pleased that we have an opportunity to have Margaret Dunlap here in person. Many of us have communicated with her on the phone and email, but to actually meet her, and most importantly, to be here today to share in-depth the program with our board. And like Dr. Navarro said, she has visited three schools. She was at Estancia this morning where I had an opportunity to observe, and it is a very, very important message for all schools. And I know the partnership will be in-depth with Corona Del Mar, but all schools can benefit from this very, very important message. Those of us who have worked in high schools know that these are very real challenges, and I'm so impressed that this is research-based, that they have worked and gained valuable experience working with many different high schools around the country, and this is very important work. So glad that the board has approved the agreement, and very happy to have this opportunity today to hear from Margaret Dunlap. So with that, Margaret.
I'll head to the presentation area. Well, thank you all, and welcome everyone here as well. Again, my name is Margaret Dunlap. I'm the school program director for Challenge Success, so I run everything school-related, as well as the faculty professional development, which again, I've gone to three of the four schools. I'll be back next Monday, and also doing a student kind of focus group at Corona Del Mar. So it's been a pleasure, and I just want to thank Deputy Superintendent Russell, as well as Superintendent Dr. Navarro for inviting me into your district. So let me give you kind of a little bit of a summary of what we're going to talk about today. So these are our goals, and I'm with you for about an hour and a half, two hours, to answer any questions you have along the way. Please feel free to reach out. We're going to learn the history and change model of Challenge Success, explore some of the research-based best practices that we have implemented in many schools around student health and wellbeing, and then talk about any questions, opportunities, and some considerations for next steps, for the district and specifically for Corona Del Mar. So just to kind of give you all a sense of where we are, Challenge Success, take a look at our logo. We are really flipping this notion of success on its head, that no longer do we want this race to nowhere to be about test scores, grades, popularity, selectivity in colleges. It's around broadening what that success looks like for kids. The problem is, and I appreciate your comment here as a parent, is that we're fighting against a culture of go-go-go, and the schools too are busier than they ever have been before. So we're going to talk through some of the research, talk about what schools have done, and look for some solutions for your district. Again, a little bit of history. This is, we've worked with over 150 schools, and here's kind of our breadth, right? You can see we've really popped up in the East Coast recently. We just launched our East Coast Conference that was just out there that way. This comprises several California schools' public parochial independent charter and whatnot. We work with middle and high schools at this point, and we do a lot of parent education as well, and also an elementary school for parent education. So I was talking to Russell about the schools in California. Several are down here in the LA area that we're working with. Our schools have made these changes, and these are just to name a few. Reducing homework and busy work. This notion of, to be a rigorous teacher, you need to give a load of homework. We debunk that myth, that you don't need to be a rigorous teacher and give a load of homework, but to focus on the meaningful qualities of homework. Looking at changing your schedules, the bell schedules, adding late starts, really critical to how the school functions and the adult stress as well in the building. Looking at parent education series, which I know that you have here, and student wellness programs. In fact, many of our schools have actually created a wellness program on their sites, run by interns and psychologists and whatnot, to have that as a resource. Looking at grading practices. We call it revision and redemption, that all kids need an opportunity to really master the content. So this, looking at kind of authentic and different assessment practices, moving away from the gotcha, and moving into, how can I help you understand this material and do well? Looking at PBL, some teachers are versed in it, some are not, but looking at ways to bring in project-based learning so that kids have real, relevant learning tasks at hand. And then, of course, most importantly, is launching advisories and ways for teachers and students to connect so that we build kind of this understanding of, and climate of care within the school. As a result, and you can look at our three-year impact report on our website, but just if you're curious, our kids are sleeping more. Our kids are cheating less. We've seen engagement tick up, less academic worry, more support felt by teachers and students, and overall, performing better in school. It's not easy though, okay? And this matters because why? Well, because on average, our kids are getting maybe six and a half hours of sleep, and if I, as a mathematician, which I'm not, but I know standard deviations, and I look at those, we know a heck of a lot of students are getting less than six and a half hours of sleep, up to five, down to five. We've got a high percentage of kids admitting to cheating in middle and high school. About a third are reporting depression and anxiety symptoms, and we've got the disengagement factor, over a third of our students, and of course, this astonishing number that when we ask students about stress and schoolwork, you know, nearly three-quarters of our student body are finding a correlation between that. So what to do? So we launched this work, again, kind of a light touch with the faculties, but more intense with Corona Del Mar, which will be initiated this fall with our Fall Conference. It is at Stanford. We are affiliated with the Graduate School of Education. We are a nonprofit, but all of our research comes out of there. Our office is at Stanford in the Graduate School of Education, and we host our Fall Conference at Stanford. This year, I talked to Kathy Scott at length, but Corona Del Mar will be coming in as a comprehensive school, and we'll talk about what that includes, but it starts with bringing a team of eight. We sometimes bump that team up to 10. It's important that the team is multi-stakeholder. So we require two students on the team, a parent or two, teachers for sure, administration, so Kathy will be there, and sometimes a counselor will bump onto that team. But the notion is, is that it is a multi-stakeholder issue. We need all voices at the table, and to make change, we absolutely have to have some transparency, and ways to go back to your school after the conference and create some momentum for change. So they come to the conference for a day and a half, you get a coach. The coach will be matched with you to support that team, facilitating discussions around what are the stressors germane to your school, what are the root causes, what are the symptoms, and coming up with an action plan. It may be low-hanging fruit, maybe it's homework, maybe it's building the advisory. We don't have a one-size-fits-all curricula, which is really the nice thing, is that every school comes, and they don't need to know what they're going to work on. So we hear from some teams, and by the way, we accept 30 new teams a year. So we are at 30 with a waitlist. Seventy-five percent this year are public, which is just nice because I know we're working within a public district here. But again, this notion of having to come in with an idea, that's not, that's not the point. It will surface during the conference and throughout the year. Now with that said, we do have a cycle of change, and what does that look like? I know it's hard. The good news is you don't need glasses. The bad news is, it's hard to see.
Okay.
So if you want to look at the, at the, kind of the top arrow, the first stage of the process for change is to really examine those root and symptoms, symptoms of stress and disengagement at school. The coach helps create a conversation around creating a vision plan, developing, revisiting an action plan, gathering information, educating to engage, get buy-in for instructional support for a plan, investigating and piloting practices. We would never say, we're going to go and poof, change the homework policy. It's got to be through a pilot, there has to be iteration and conversation with all. If you work with a school and you lower the homework, you'll have parents say, what happened to our rigorous school? Without the education behind what homework, what we know is true about homework, it's gonna, it's gonna fall flat. Teachers too, will wait, I need to get my content pushed out. You're going to have, lower my homework? How am I going to possibly teach AP Bio or APUSH, right? We debunk that as well. We've had teachers carve their homework by a third one-year, get the same scores on the AP, carve it by a third again, and the kids are getting the same scores on the AP. So when we see kind of some of the research behind what we know, we start to create some buy-in. And then again, at the end of the circle here, measuring results and decide whether to institutionalize the changes. And then it goes around and around. So when you become a Challenge Success partner school, you join our family, it's not one and done for a year. Many schools return the next year, a lot lower cost, and have the option of having a coach again. And the whole hope is that that team will come back and kind of create some strength and leadership. So as a board, I just want to underscore the importance of that team meeting on a consistent basis. We've found that some teams who, kind of the conference are really excited, and then poof, they don't have time. So we have a coach working with them four times a year, but in between, we really hope that that team will meet consistently. Okay, so that's our change process. I want to share with you a video. This is a school that's gone through Cycle One, and they have solicited Student Voice, and that would be helpful for you to hear from La Cuyata. How many of you know of La Cuyata? It's nearby, right? Okay, so this is a Challenge Success Student Club. They put on a video. Student Voice, I hear it's already percolating here. It's extremely powerful to have it, so we're going to go ahead and listen. It's about three minutes.
Better grades and test scores and GPs.
Definitely, I like your grade, great average.
It's on high junior.
Good grades, good test scores.
Great test scores, now like getting straight A's, taking all the hardest classes, getting a good college, and you know, getting a good job, making a lot of money.
You can at least establish your parents in terms of like, career.
How are you doing in class? Is your, like, class rate?
I'm high pristine college.
Making plans for your future in terms of college.
Going to a good, good college.
And I always think it should be that way, going to a good college.
Get into some tough, hard, I mean, this, well, on the same time, like, you know, the star athlete or stars and shit.
Numerous extracurricular activities.
How many APs you take, how involved you are at school, how much things you can balance, like, how much can you frame into one day?
What college you go to, your GPA, your SAT scores, how involved you are with the community, if you're doing all those extracurriculars, and if you are considered like the top student.
If you're prepared on what you're doing and you're enjoying what you're doing.
Making yourself happy.
Being happy.
Being happy, like, like, making a career that I'm passionate about.
Being happy.
Being happy with what you're doing.
Achieving what makes you happy in life, finding happiness, and it's being satisfied with your position, being content with what you already have.
Finding what I'm passionate about, and knowing what I'm going to do and doing it well.
So seeking what I do and have a good time doing it.
Just trying your hardest.
If you work hard, doing your best.
Trying your best and getting better.
Achieving personal goals.
Make some sort of positive difference in the world.
Just making a positive influence on people you need.
Following your own generation.
A lot of people saying.
If you wake up every day and you're excited to start the day because you know you're going to enjoy what you're doing, how would it be someone who says, oh, see you.
All right, well, that was La Cuyata, and again, a school that has worked with us for a couple of years, and again, brought in the most important piece, which is Student Voice. So I know that when I go to Corona Del Mar next Monday, I'm going to be working with a small group of students to kind of solicit some Student Voice anonymously, but we know it's extremely important. We also know the I Wish Campaign, we call it the I Wish Campaign, I Wish My Parents Knew, I Wish My Teachers Knew. It's really nice for colleagues to do it at our schools because faculty are under extreme amount of stress, and so to have I Wish My Colleagues Knew as well is a nice idea. All right, so let me go ahead and go back into this, which is always a bit tricky for me, and I may need my tech guy. Oh, wait, I think I figured it out. There we go, okay. So PCs, oh, and it went away. What did I do wrong? Where'd it go?
Brian.
There we go, okay, I'm not touching it, we're leaving it. All right, we're good. So what I want you all to think about, and you can think about any school here in the district, but I'm focusing on Corona Del Mar. You can say Newport Harbor High, Parents in the Room at Estancia, or Costa Mesa. What three words would you hope students use to describe Corona Del Mar High School? And I just want you to turn to someone and come up with those three words, and come back to me in about a minute. Three words you hope students use to describe a school here in the district.
Poor translator.
I'll tell you what the kids, how kids describe it. We offer a survey, and Corona Del Mar will be part of the survey.
Oh, that's good.
Does anybody want to share? Let's take it to you. Does anyone want to share one of your words?
Sure.
One of your adjectives?
Mine, safety. One of mine's safe.
Safe, nice.
Yep.
Great. What else came up for you?
Have fun.
Fun.
I said, we said engaging.
Nice, engaging.
Yeah.
Anyone else come up with anything else?
Challenging.
Challenging, right?
Caring.
Nice, wonderful. So when we push out a survey, there is a qualitative and a quantitative portion to it. We have students who bring up these three words. We typically see this in high-achieving schools. Competitive, hard, stressful, challenging. We love to see schools that also have engaging and fun, but it'll be curious to see what your kind of three words will be. Students are asked to give the three words. This is an example of one of our school surveys. Of course, to be confidential, stressful showed up, and it was kind of an eye-opener for the faculty to find that stress was really a big deal at their school. We hear boring, competitive, some, some positive words. Rewarding, consuming, welcoming. So we'll find out. We'll find out how the students self-report at Corona Del Mar in the fall. And the parent education to follow will include some information from the survey data. We're really careful to make sure we don't include data, for example, teacher care, that may be something that if it doesn't show up really high, we would protect the parent group from that number exactly. But all of you parents, what we do is we have a live report that will remain in each of the schools, so Corona Del Mar will have a hard copy report, and any parent is allowed to come and see the data. But we want to also express we will support you in how you present the data to the parents, because to your parents' point, they want transparency as to this work. And so carefully making sure that that is out there and transparent is important. So what are the sources of stress? And this is what I asked your faculty this morning and in the last two weeks, Phil has been, oh, he just left, but he's been part of this talk for a while now. But what do you perceive the sources of stress are for the students here?
Homework.
Homework load.
Grades.
Yep.
Frontal pressure.
Yes, absolutely.
Air pressure.
Oh, yeah, like never before. Yeah, you guys, you guys hit the top ones, but it's really around.
Lack of sleep, yeah.
So what was that?
Lack of sleep.
Yeah, absolutely. They don't, they don't say that, but yes, the lack of sleep. They don't even know it's an issue, but, but we know that it's bilaterally correlated to anxiety and depression, it's the deprivation. So we hear homework load, we hear social media stress, socioeconomic stress, families, the haves and the have-nots, and kind of disparities you see, especially in this district, literally divided by a freeway. And so lots of sources. Of course, college selectivity, and where they get in is a huge source of stress. Their AP load, maybe not even able to take one AP, but that peer pressure piece in terms of courses is here at front and center, for sure. So I want to give you a little backdrop about Challenge Success. Denise Pope, our co-founder, is from Stanford. She shadowed, before writing her dissertation, she shadowed five high-achieving students in the Silicon Valley. They were all B-plus and above, great kids. One was named Kevin, and I always tell the story, Phil has heard this. He actually carried a calculator with him to keep track of his weighted and unweighted grades. This is 15 years ago. His dad was a Berkeley-educated engineer, wanted Kevin to be a Berkeley-educated engineer, and the pressures behind him doing well and succeeding in school were tremendous. He was first gen, he was out here. The first thing they did when they got the SAT scores was call the family in the home country to report and celebrate. Kevin ultimately ended up cheating in front of Denise in class because his notion was, it's cheat or get cheated. I'm way worse off, you know, disappointing dad than, than taking a risk and trying to do well through cheating. The other student is Teresa. She worked at a gas station till 10 o'clock at night. She got home, finally, the apartment was quiet at 10, and she was able to squeeze in her homework. She took care of her siblings. This is much like the population I just spoke to that resonates with the fact that we've got different kids on the continuum. They're all needing the same developmental needs of adolescents, and they're just not getting it. So when the book came out, she published it, it was called Doing School. Each of these students wrote his or her chapter. The Vaden Health Center at Stanford got a hold of it and said, whoa, we're getting the aftermath of these kids at Stanford. They're crashing and burning and ending up in our Vaden Health Center, and frankly, on suicide watch with straight A's. So, so kids are no, they're not able to hide behind the grades anymore. So it was, it was a bell ringing and said, hey, we need you to do an intervention here at the Graduate School of Education to work on engagement with parents and students about reframing success. So that's how we came to be about 15 years ago. And so here's Kevin, and I just want you to take a look at this quote. One day Denise saw he was kind of on fire, raising his hand in class, and she said, whoa, Kevin, what, you know, what were you learning? What were you jazzed about? And she, he said this quote she'll never forget. People don't go to school to learn. They go to get good grades, which brings them to college, which brings them to high-paying job, which brings them to happiness, or so they think. And echoes of the same sentiment are in every hallway in many of our schools across the country, that it's about, it's not about the engagement, it's not about learning, it's about getting it done. It's about the game of doing school. And again, the book was therefore entitled Doing School. So now, I just want to be clear around working with parents. When I walk into a parent education evening and I ask parents to define success, what do you think we hear typically? Characteristics, what characteristics?
Getting into a good college.
Sometimes they say that, and it's good, because often, sometimes they say, yes, success is equated on getting to a good college. What else do you think we hear?
Hard work.
Hard work.
A child that works hard.
I think they want their kids to be happy.
We hear happiness, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a lot of friends.
Right, be social, have friendships.
Get awards.
Well, it becomes very apparent during the talk that we really are surfacing those important intrinsic measures of success.
Right.
And we do have some folks who say things like being valedictorian, right? Getting into the top-notch school. And that's okay, because what it does is it brings a conversation. It's about the conversation. Now, so it's really those intrinsic aspects which really do surface.
Parents want their kids to like school.
Right.
They want them to say, I like going to school.
Right.
They like that.
That's right, that's right. Um, and to focus on the learning and not the earning, which is what our kids are doing. They are focusing on the earning. So, um, and now, what about, what about students? And I'll, I'll ask students, uh, next week, how, how do you think they define success?
Probably getting good grades and
How many likes they have on social media.
Yeah, and they take it really quickly down, right? I've, I've got teenage kids, and yeah, I know, I hear about that. Right, so, i- it's really those extrinsic measures, right? So, popularity, GPA, college selectivity, that's what's important. It's all about, and, and the one who wins getting through school is the one who ends up with the highest grades, the highest ACT or SAT and gets into the top tier college. When we even know now in the research, kids aren't getting, even with a 4.8 and a 36 bump ACT, they're not getting into those schools. Um, and so, not always. So, so, uh, so, we found this like divide, and these are the same parents of the same students and why this disconnects. So, it really is important that we work with the parent. Now, I'm going to go through some of our basic buckets of research with homework, extracurriculars, um, sleep and cheating. So, let's get started with our first one. I want you to think about homework. Um, every school is different. We, here's our survey, which Corona Del Mar will be taking. Um, over a hundred thousand students, middle and high, have been surveyed to date. These are the questions, uh, categories. And we have about 70 questions typically done within a 30 or 40 minute timeframe. Um, they are anonymous. There is an opt-out waiver, um, at passive consent. So, if, in the fall, Kathy will send out something that says, if you don't want your student to take this survey, turn in this form in the office, and they will be excused. Um, otherwise, everyone takes it. It takes about four weeks to get the data together. We have an hour or two brief call with whomever's interested in, on the team. And typically, sometimes a student will, will bump on the call or, um, whomever is interested and, and we'll, we'll give you the flags.
Margaret? This, it's here. The parents will decide whether the kid wants to take the survey?
That's right, it's the parent.
So, but, so the kid won't have the opportunity, what if the kid wants to take the survey?
Yeah, we're IRB, so I believe based, it would have to be the parent giving that consent to the child. Yeah, and we can have that conversation with my research director about that. Um, I haven't heard of a story where the kid really wants to take it and the parent says no.
Okay.
I haven't had that, yet.
Okay.
Yet.
I'm just thinking, boy.
Um, okay, so homework, here's what our research again, over a hundred thousand, um, kids in terms of what the nightly homework load looks like. So, in our middle school, it's about two plus hours per night. This is just to be clear, Monday through Friday. When we look at the weekend homework, it's startling, some of the numbers, upwards of three, three and a half hours for our high school students. But this is just Monday through Friday, it's time on task. Um, high school, it's about three hours a night, Monday through Friday. And the kicker here is we've got a heck of a lot of students doing more than three and a half hours per night. Um, again, we see upwards of four and five. Ask for students, they'll let you know. Um, but, uh, that's the tipping scale, right there at 3.5 is about where we see the slide and decline in physical and mental health. Um, headaches, stomach aches, exhaustion, um, that is really clear in the research, that's where it's showing up. And the bummer really is a teacher and a mom is that their perception of homework is that it is busy work. And so, mitigating this notion of quantity of homework and really reflecting on what is a quality homework assignment, what is a purpose, and looking at effective characteristics of homework is something we can help with. We have a whole workshop devoted to making homework work. Um, we also have a workshop for parents, not for high school parents, because high school parents, hands off, is, is what we want to say. Yet, we know that the folks are still weighing in on those papers. And even at Stanford, we have parents weighing in on their papers, but the track document's still, um, on. That's a problem. So, i- i- if you, if you release early, then that will be a problem. So, again, the research behind the homework, what works? Well, we know at K5, there is, um, zero correlation between homework and academic achievement, which is shocking, and what we do know shows up is self-selected reading. So, your kiddos who are busy with ballet and tutoring and karate, uh, maybe some kickback time with a self-selected reading book, um, we know that those kiddos just need free play, free time. That's genius time. Um, so, that's the research there. Harris Cooper is kind of our guru. Uh, in middle school, the correlation's up to 90 minutes and then it fades. Uh, and then in high school, it's about two hours a night, um, where we see the, the correlation between homework and academic achievement. So, this is Monday through Friday homework. We also looked at extracurriculars and boy are kids busy. We're going to find out exactly how busy they are here, but from anecdotally what I hear. Um, in our sample survey, we've got 85% participating in at least one extracurricular. And we're fans of extracurriculars. You're often mentored by a new adult that's not evaluative. You learn a new sport, you're out there getting exercise, or you're involved with some artistic, um, of, uh, you know, performance or, or otherwise. Um, but how much is too much, is our question. Um, in middle school, we've got kids doing about 6.9 hours per week, Monday through Friday. That's, does, does not include the travel team, the lacrosse, you know, um, club sport, et cetera. And in high school, it's about 10 and a half hours per week. Which is like your typical lacrosse practice, require a cappella, drama, fill in the blank. Um, but, when we look at the, the range, it's zero to 35 hours, which is almost a full-time job. And you think, how can this be? Well, you've got kids doing early morning water polo or crew. They're going to school, they're in the debate team, they're on ASV, they're going, 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 going. They go after school, they might have some faith formation affiliation at church. A lot of things they can do to fill their time. And, um, they certainly are. So, this is worrisome to us, is this, um, overscheduled aspect of our kids' lives, both in and out of school. So, along with the homework and the extracurricular load, um, again, this, this won't be surprising to anyone in the room, sleep. It, it's what the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, calls a global epidemic, that no one's getting the sleep they need, and what are the consequences of that? So, just in, in terms of what your middle schooler needs, uh, 10 hours of sleep a night. Your little sixth grader, seventh grader, that eighth grade boy, 10 hours a night. It's almost impossible to get. Um, because, you know, they get home from football practice at, you know, uh, 7:30, 8:00, and with homework, and, and how's a kid to wind down? High school, uh, the recommended is nine hours of sleep per night. Again, they're not getting close. So, what we know in our research is, um, the middle schoolers are not getting eight, not even eight hours of sleep. So, at a deficit of two hours a night. And, uh, the high school starts with a six. So, 6.7 hours per night. We'll find out what, what the students at Corona Del Mar self-report in terms of sleep, um, but that is, um, astonishingly low. And again, to, we look, there are tons of kids getting five hours of sleep. They almost wear it like a badge of honor, right? Um, and, and they have to do it to get the work done. Um, the consequences of sleep are severe. We know that depression and anxiety are bilaterally connected to sleep deprivation. Um, it's, it's, it's a fact. So, um, issues with short and long-term memory. It's actually, the science of sleep is you have to sleep to get short-term memories converted into long-term memories. Um, you consolidate information, um, you weed out unnecessary information, and you create new, creative associations. That's not going to happen if you're not getting the deep, long, both REM and non-REM sleep, which happen at different parts of the night, on a consistent basis. We know cyber bullying is going up incredibly, um, 24/7 digital drama is happening. You know, it used to be that you'd leave school and the walls of the school would protect your home life. It is no longer the case. So, kids' lives are continuing on as they go home to a safe, protected home and, and yet feel, um, obligated to keep up their social collateral 24/7, um, and the pressures along with, um, with that. And then, of course, there are more drowsy drivers on the road than drunk drivers. We know that car accidents and drowsy driving is a huge issue. Um, back to sleep very quickly, I mention this because we know a lot of middle schoolers and high schools are actually kind of bobbing their head back with the sleep deprivation showing up. But for our little kids K through 5, it's actually the opposite. They get wound up. So, they spin around, they look really energetic, and a teacher may say, gosh, does this kid have ADHD or ADD? Uh, you know, and so, we're on a different path. And we've certainly gotten better at diagnosing those two things, and yet, we have some kids who probably would benefit from a patterned, long-term sleep schedule, where screens are out of the bedroom 45 minutes before, so the melatonin can release. Um, and for all of you, blue light, does anyone have blue light glasses in the room here? Um, they protect your eyes. So, if you're, uh, working, uh, in the evening, just go online and get their, their, uh, called Gunner, and they're blue light, and they actually protect you from your blue screen so that you can have a restful sleep as well. Um, if I ask students, how many of you have your alarm clocks as phones in your bedrooms, what do you think we hear?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, almost, 90, 90%, middle school, shocking for me, to be in a middle school, um, and, and hear about that last week in Texas. It is 90%. So, uh, funny story, some schools have gone and bought those little cheap alarm clocks, right? Some schools have just put in the old Target $2 alarm clocks. Uh, but it requires parent education about getting those digital devices out of the bedrooms, and that, um, our kids are really on them more than they realize. Along with the homework, the extracurriculars, the lack of sleep, they're making choices they're not proud of, but they have no choice. Cheat or be cheated is what they say to us. We have no way of getting through this work, a busy day, a busy afternoon, a- and show up the next day. We want to do so, so well. Remember Kevin, our cheater? He had no choice, he said. So, in our middle school, we've got 25% reporting that they have not cheated in the last year. In high school, we've got, you know, the 88%. We ask about 15 different ways to cheat, um, copying from someone's homework with his or her, her knowledge, um, forging an excuse to have the next day take the test, um, going to the restroom and using your, your iPhone to look up information, getting the test answers before the test, lots of different ways that they're cheating. And if you ask a faculty member, they can list 15 off the top of their head, of the way they've, they've seen it. Um, the bummer here is that, you know, we love co- cooperative work, but teachers do ask for individual work, and these students, they just can't do it. So, they ally up, you do this part, I'll do that part, they meet, so who's doing what? And who knows what? And who's gaining what from the homework? We don't know. So, 70% report, um, working together when asked for individual work. And again, more of them view this as not cheating, it's trivial. It, it's, it's figuring out how to get it all done. Um, all right, so, almost done with the depressing slides, guys, but, um, I, homework, homework, extracurriculars, uh, sleep cheating, and what are the academic tools? Well, they're pretty serious. They, they call themselves robo-students. This notion of going through day by day, lifeless, learning's become lifeless for them, getting through. Um, and so much that we see widespread disengagement. And this is just not only the kids taking maybe five APs, right? They're disengaged, but you also have the other end of the spectrum of kids who are opting out. I can't possibly play this game, not able to even take one way to class, one AP class. Um, and so, they're disengaged. Um, so, again, huge, and then, what we're seeing is this, uh, the lack of creativity. And I tell the story, the professor at, uh, Stanford in computer science, who by the way, started at a community college, I always tell this story, he started at a community college, he failed the first year, he finally went back, got jazzed by his chemistry professor, went on, and now he is the chair of the computer science department at Stanford. Yes, so
I will use that.
We will debunk myths about college, for sure, um, in our parent education as well. But, I will say that he says, gosh, you know, 10 years ago, students would say, uh, you know, I, I'm really jazzed to write this program, what do you think about it? And now, the question is, I need an A in this class, what program should I write? And again, I bring up the Legos all the time, but the Legos and now this blueprint of how they should be versus 10 years ago, where kids were just playing with, with Legos, just building them to build them. Um, but we really slowly eat the creativity out of our kids. And so, how can we bring that back, um, so that they are engaged in school? Um, and inability to solve complex problems, and we hear it over and over again. You know, major search engines from our Silicon Valley in our backyard, Google, IDEO, edTech, they are saying to us, look, these kids coming out of Harvard and Yale and Princeton, they can't solve problems. They, they're really good at, at tackling something they've seen before, and filling in the bubble, but if you throw a real problem at them, they don't know what to do. They haven't really had a chance to fail along the way. Um, so, we love this word, successful failures at challenge success, that we want kids to, to fail. We want them to stumble, we want them to be able to pick themselves back up. Um, so, they, they tell us that they cannot, um, teach passion integrity. They can teach business skills, so these kids coming out of these top-tier schools, we're finding that they are, um, widening their reach for hiring from schools, um, around the country, um, humanities students who have not had this very narrow, um, uh, uh, walk through, through school. And then, of course, we're looking at the 21st century skills. We're seeing that kids are not, um, you know, critical thinkers, we just talked about, communication, they won't look you in the eye, all these simple critical skills, um, collaboration is just not showing up um, a- a- at the college level. And then, promised last depressing sc- slide, we see the health tools as well. Um, we talked about the sleep deprivation, um, a lot of education you as a board can do with your parents in the community around sleep deprivation. The National Sleep Foundation is a great resource, um, and the American Academy of Pediatrics as well, with lots of sleep information you can push out to your parents around the importance of sleep. Um, I mean, really, you want a magic pill to lose weight, be smarter, be healthier? Go to sleep, right? Go to sleep. Uh, it's true. Uh, a lack of resilience, and, and I ask teachers all over the place, you know, gosh, you see a difference, and they just crash when they get their B or B minus, they break up with a girlfriend or a boyfriend. Uh, and, and inability to kind of step back up, it becomes like a 911 situation. Um, and anxiety and depression, again, over a third of our students, the bullying, of course, especially cyber, and then drug abuse, and, and it's not just marijuana, it, you know, and vaping now that we see kids actually vaping in class, in the back. Um, but it's Adderall and Ritalin are number one selling drugs on, on high school campuses across the country. Um, and then, other debilitating disorders. Um, a lot of perfectionism we're seeing in the elementary school years. We see eating disorders that used to kind of fall into high school and middle school that now has dropped into the upper elementary school. Um, so, along with, um, cutting, uh, down in the middle school, suicide ideation, and unfortunately, suicide completion. So, that, that really is the last of the depressing slides. We're going to turn the talk around now. I know, but, but this is a question about, and I oppose the faculties, do you believe and perceive we can find balance in this fast-paced culture? What do you think?
I think we can.
Yeah, that's good, because you're all optimists, and you're all on the board, so that's fantastic news.
Well, most of our kids are graduated, have jobs, and are
Yes, that's great, that's great.
We did, I did a, um, in high school for both of my sons, um, a study night, and one of the parents challenged me and said, well, that's cheating if they're, you know, I said, well, we're doing homework. And, um, so I asked all the teachers, not all, I didn't get ahold of all, and they thought it was great, but it never occurred to me
That that would be cheating.
That, that would be cheating, but, um, but they did collaborate, they did share, and, and we only had boys, we said, no girls can come, because it would be a distraction. And, uh, well, we had hosted exchange, female exchange students at our house, and we learned that wasn't good at right away, but, um, but we ended up having to open it up, because we, we ended up with 15 kids at, at our house. And, um, and nobody went in the other rooms, they all stayed and were engaged, and, uh, they, you know, they loved it. And so, my younger son ended up doing the same thing, but we learned that from Europe, because that's what they did when, you know, we visited them. They were really surprised at how much work, busy work we had. Irrelevant.
Yes.
Is what they called it.
Right, great, well
So, it's great, and I think, you know, now that we're doing with Common Core and the collaboration in the classroom, and I think that's going to happen in the future, I hope it does.
Yeah, no, thank you for sharing that. And we know many, um, you know, the question around homework, we'll hear, well, it's not in my classroom, I'm not assigning, is to do an in-class homework campaign, and schools can do it, and they just choose a week, and everybody does their homework in class, and teachers learn a lot. They learn that the directions aren't clear, and that's what's taking so much time, is to figure out the directions. Um, they learn that, um, students learn they're not distracted on social media when they get started, uh, and do the homework, uh, during, when they're fresh and not home from a late day of, um, extracurriculars and whatnot. So, um, uh, to start the homework in class and do a homework campaign would be a nice, um, start to that exploration. Yeah.
When you talk about, like, homework or doing things in class, do you have any research about block schedule versus not block schedule?
Only anecdotally, and I'll tell you what, we've, we've a lot of schools, and I love that you guys are on. Is everybody on block, all four schools? Because I looked at Stancia, I recall, is not, um, you've got one Not middle. Day. We know that teachers by proxy, um, are, are assigning less homework when they're just meeting with their class a few times a week versus the five. But there, it does require some education, because teachers still perceive that they have to get their content pushed out vis-à-vis homework. Homework, the purpose of homework is not to, um, do extended work on your own. It's to do practice skills, um, learn in class, have some authentic experiences outside, things that can't be done in class. Um, so, only anecdotally, we've heard that students, those who have shifted from traditional to a block schedule have less homework.
That's good to know, really.
Interesting, good question.
Now, let's, um, any questions? I just want to ask, are there any questions so far?
Um, I just, I just wanted to share, I was looking something up. Um, um, I read a book, Why We Sleep by Matthew
Matt Walker, my favorite guru guy.
Oh, my God, it was
You must share, go ahead, Vicky.
It was very enlightening on so many levels. I recommend it for all people, parents.
Yeah, because I'm not a sleeper.
One of the things, though, he was talking about studying, and the student that will stay up all night
and the student that will stay up all night to study for a test. And it reminded me, what you said a little earlier, is the students that had sleep before, even less studying. You need that sleep to lay down.
That's right. The pathways.
The pathways. And it is, I think we've, in this society, as we get busier, we've put aside, it's like, I don't need sleep, you just drink coffee, you'll be fine. But that book is very.
You know, I read it over Christmas, all of Challenge Success team read it, there's nine of us. And we all read it, and we just couldn't stop talking about it. And I gave it away to someone, you know, you have a friend over, and you just give your book, and you're like, well, anyway, I want it back. But I gave it to her, she's having a hard time sleeping. But Why We Sleep by Matt Walker, he's at Cal, he's a researcher, he's been on sabbatical, he's coming back and going on paperback this fall. And I'm bringing him in as a speaker at some point to our fall conference. But thanks for bringing that up, Vicky.
I have a question, are we?
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. I think it's easier in this format to just ask.
In this format, yeah, just.
I did, it's like, are we pushing our philosophy all the way down to elementary schools? Because I see a lot of what you're seeing, I saw in the elementary schools that I was a principal of, and I worked really hard not to. And it's really, really challenging when you have a parent that looks at you in kindergarten and says, I have to have homework for my kindergartner. And I say, make it up for them yourself. Because we're not going to do it.
I, we do have folks who come with us with a K-12 district. And we do have, I'll go through what's called space. So remind me to circle back to that question, and I will. Because we do have ideas to support, and really comes, well, I'll get there.
I mean, first we do our crisis, but then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and again, that's really working upstream, and that's what you want to do. And that's why the parent education piece, K-12, is so important, is to address that.
Their two-year-olds.
Oh, yes, it's crazy.
Grandparents calling and saying, is this healthy?
Right, you're right. I've heard of SAT vocab words for third graders going to school, back, you know, testing. I've heard it all.
Well, the laughter of, oh, my gosh, my child didn't get into that preschool. And we laugh about it, like, it's funny, but it's not, it's real, and it's scary.
Yeah, yeah. So those poor parents, you just want to give them a hug and say, you know what? Play with your child, that's genius time. The Hurried Child is a great book too, for elementary school, The Hurried by David Elkin. He was on our board, The Hurried Child. Yeah, yeah. Great. All right, let's move on and feel free to ask some questions along the way.
I just, I do have a couple. I just have one. And this is, two comments. One is, I'm disappointed that our union leadership is not here to hear this. I'm very disappointed from the standpoint that they're 50% of working with the family. We've got, we have, we have a parent. I know that we had a lot of, lot of, some of my colleagues posted on social media to let the, you know, community know. So we have a couple of parents. So I'm a little disappointed in the union leadership. The next thing is, and it really goes to what our job is in terms of policy, is have you been working with boards? And how a board can facilitate some of these policies that you're going to be implementing, or Corona Del Mar, for example, will be implementing, or all of our schools, in terms of homework policies, grading policies, start-of-school policies, that, that when you look at it and you're looking at it and you're making the recommendation nationally, there are some policies that, that just make common sense for an entire district to do. So the question is, have you had conversations with boards? And what are current boards? Like, for example, what is La Crenada Flintridge? What is their, what is their board? How are their boards addressing some of these policy issues?
I would like to facilitate, but not mandate. Do you know what I mean? I mean, if it comes, if it generates from the school, we want to support them, but I don't want to say, okay, every child must go to bed at eight.
Oh, I'm not saying that, but I don't say that. But when you're talking about start-of-school, grading policies, homework, I just would like to know.
Yeah, so it's a really good question. And I've not heard of La Crenada's board being, being interactive in this process, although I'm sure they have. So that'd be interesting for me to find out, because I know both the leaders at La Crenada at seven, eight, and La Crenada High School. So I'd certainly be interested. And I've worked with one board up in Seattle, a private school just presenting. It was more around buy-in. So to date, we've really, Denise and I have traveled and done board talks for buy-in and education in itself. In terms of this specific schoolwork, it's really up to that leader and that team to come up with it. They can certainly have a channel where they report to Russell or have it one person, but the whole board hasn't typically weighed in on anything. Now, when it comes to a change in policy, that has to be board-approved, right? So then we would get to the point where we would look at that, you would look at that. And again, back to that cycle of change, it's usually a pilot, where you're piloting something and then you institutionalize it. So I think for the purpose of today is around education and buy-in and understanding and to answer questions. But I'd be curious now that you've kind of questioned that, that around other schools, Board of Education and their influence. But to date, I haven't.
Because you've been around for long, it's been around for a long time.
Those boards, those 10-year-old boards.
Yeah, those boards. But we can certainly find out. I'd be curious what Jim Cartel, for example, who actually created a position called a Challenge Success Coordinator in, at La Crenada, how he interfaces with his board, I can certainly find out. But it's a great question. Because I think the real interest here is that you do want to have some sort of action, right, on your part. But let's start with the education piece and then move forward with what happens in the fall. Yeah, for sure. Here's our mission. We partner with schools and families and communities to promote a broad definition of success and implement research-based strategies so that all kids are healthy and engaged with learning. And that's what we're all about. And again, we work with a lot of different constituencies around that message. This is how, okay, so let me just walk through the school program. That's Corona Del Mar coming to our conferences. Again, there's a fall conference, and then we benchmark it with a spring conference. And there'll be coaching along the way. Professional development, we have live and video surveys, which Corona Del Mar will be having. The parent education as well, and then research. A lot of our information is online, and many parents will want to see it. So to be thinking about, as a board, for example, your communication to the greater parents. Did you know? And throwing out our white paper on homework. So that's where I can help you and link with some templates around how other districts have actually championed the work. You know, we are partnering with Challenge Success, this is, who are they, right? So that information, that context, and what you'll be doing. I sent some to Kathy, but I'd be happy to send them to you. Because I think the messaging will be your crucial role to the, to the greater parent body here. All right, so I want to walk through our research-based framework. It's called space. We believe every student needs space in their day. And we fall under these five categories that over 150 schools have implemented in these five buckets. The first is schedule. The S is for schedule and use of time. So that actually includes late starts. Many of our schools have instituted late start. I know you have one at Estancia. I don't know if you have late starts across the board. But we know based on sleep that kids need a late start. And so those are typically around 9:00, 9:10 that those schools start. One day of the week, if there's two late starts, the teachers all come in for collaboration. The other day is tutorial. And students come in for tutorial to meet with their teachers to get that extra help. If they don't need it, they sleep in. And believe you me, they, they really do, those students use it if they need help. They will go in and sacrifice their sleep to get that help. Transition. So a lot of schools are on a five-minute quick transition or no transition at all. We know in the research, it's about 11 to 13 minutes for the adolescent brain to transition from high-level physics to AP English and be ready for that teacher. And so to be looking at stretching your transitions between classes, or if that's not possible due to a bell schedule, then to be really looking at incorporating mindfulness or some sort of transition as a teacher with your students in the class. Because the go-go-go mentality, it's going to affect the rest of the period, and to allow for that. Exams. Estancia, for example, do not have, their final exams after winter break. That's just not good for kids, they need a real break. So to be thinking about each school having their final exams before break. And how big do those final exams have to be? Do they have to be this summative assessment? Or they can be more of a formative assessment, right? Checking in on student mastery along the way. So that's just a whole nother topic around assessment. But we would love to see those exams moved before the winter break. Test and project calendar. This is where, everybody knows, departmentally, interdepartmentally, who's assigning what? What's, when's the calculus test? When is the big US history project due? And if you have transparency, and teachers now know that we don't want to hit the 10th graders with a tsunami of work all in one or two days. Because you know what? That's not fair. There's no way that our kids can get ready for these high-stakes tests and really perform at their best in one day or two days. So creating, anything from an online version, I have some nice ideas. You can email me and I'll be sending those to you. You know, Schoology, do you use Schoology? What's your online platform? Do you use anything for?
School Loop.
School Loop and Board.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I don't know if it has the capacity for that. But, you know, and some teachers just say, wow, we're not ready to do this whole online thing. And by the way, it gets competitive with the faculty who want to put up their test before the other person, can you see how this happens? It does, is to put up a conflict calendar. So teachers put up their own conflict calendar, have students weigh in. Gosh, I have got the soccer tournament, and I'm leaving school today too, from, you know what? I, you know, have this giant thing, you know, due in the morning, and I can't possibly get it done. Can you move it? So to build that cross-communication between students and teachers with a conflict calendar in the classroom. Has to be some education around that. Your Shire students won't step up if there's a date that's, you know, seems to surface and bubble up quickly. So you've got to let everybody feel comfortable weighing in.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but more of a comment. Because you mentioned, I think, because you were at Estancia this morning, that they have their test schedules after winter break. All our schools are like that? And I think that's another reason we would really like our union here to listen to this. Because we would like, you may know that we're one of the latest starting school districts. We would like to move that up, and so, for, yes.
What date do you guys start next year? What August date?
We start in September after later date.
Yeah, okay. Wow, okay, okay, I didn't know it was that late.
So that's something that we're working on, we're hoping to work on with our union representatives. And it's a shame that they're not here to learn what, hear what you're saying about it.
Right, right, right.
Something we did willy-nilly and say, oh, maybe let's do this, because everybody else is.
Because if we did, if we did have an earlier start date, we would have our exams before the holidays.
That's right, you need to, you need to balance out the semesters and whatnot. And I'd be happy just on my, you know, to talk to a board, if they're willing. I've worked with unions before, being part of a giant district up north. So let me know if there's a person who'd be willing to have a conversation, and I can back it with the research and, you know. But I hear you, because that is a big missing link. But I wonder what might be the pushback from a union standpoint on that one specifically?
We're not going to go there.
Okay, we're not going to go there.
When you try to do something on behalf of kids for four years and you engage the kids, they come. The students came, they were extremely disappointed.
And even the majority of the teachers would like it, so.
So this is from bottom before, okay.
So, for another discussion.
For another discussion. Of course, back to the S in our space framework, the homework issue. Kids don't need to be doing meaningless homework, they perceive it as busy work. That's a problem in itself, that leads to disengagement, and how to make homework more effective. And again, reduce overall load. And really debunking this notion that to be a rigorous teacher, you have to have a load of homework, is huge. So again, we can do some education around that for faculties this coming year at Corona Del Mar. So that's some of the S, the factors in our S category. And I'll be handing out a document that kind of clarifies all these different buckets for you at the end.
Okay.
I'm feeling stressed.
Let me see how many I have.
You can give it to, yeah.
Yeah, let me just start.
We can pass them down.
Yeah, you might need, I made an effort, 10, I believe. Let's see what I have for everybody. Maybe do some sharing so I can bring it down to.
I'm running out of.
I'm running out of paper. Oh, this is great.
Can you guys share? And then I'll have a few back here. Yeah, take her a little review.
Keep going.
All right, let's see.
You got one, right?
I got one to share. All right, so I'm going to, you'll see a lot of different ideas. But let me just tap on the project of problem-based learning. So, you know, some teachers are steeped in it. I asked Estancia, very few are doing PBL. It requires a lot of education. And when you have an 85-minute block, that's a long time for kids to be sitting. And best practice would be in terms of engagement, that there is some PBL going on. We at Challenge Success like to say we don't boil the ocean. So in terms of PBL, we have some resources for you that you can go to some very vetted organizations that work with staff. But that is a long-term. In fact, when we work with schools who are in traditional skinny periods, 45 minutes to 50-minute periods, moving to longer, we always say, whoa. The first thing that needs to happen is staff development in pedagogy. Because your stand-and-deliver teachers will stand and deliver twice as long. And if they don't know, you know, some best practices, that's going to make for a super-long period for teachers and students alike. So we love that projects are relevant. It of course brings up student choice and voice. If you're doing PBL, they automatically have choice and they have voice in what they're learning and doing. And I was telling this to Estancia, I'm reading a great book called What Schools Could Be by Ted Dintersmith, has anyone seen that? I was just reading it last night coming down here on the plane. And there's a teacher, an English teacher, high school junior, junior student, who is trying to mean out, in the book she tells. And she relates that she offered her students in English, one period a week, sounds like they have a traditional schedule, by the way, that they had genius time, that they could choose whatever they were interested in in learning. It would be their own time to investigate. The story goes on that half the students did a Google search for, how do I know what I'm interested in? Which is a huge problem in itself. So I don't think it's half the students, I'd push back that it was half the students, but still, kind of alarming statement in itself, that our kids, given the chance to investigate a problem or a topic on their own, own time would not. And I'm just getting the quote right, which is, what should I be interested in? Was the Google. What should I be interested in? This is a reality check for many of our students. So looking at ways to involve relevant, you know, interesting projects in school. Okay, our space, let's move on to our A. So authentic revision-redemption grading policies. So this is a notion of a redo. It was great to see Estancia faculty member raise his hand and say, you know, one of the positive things I'm doing is I allow my kids to retake a test. We absolutely believe that students should have an opportunity to show mastery. If you're doing a test and you vomit, what's the point of moving on? You haven't mastered the material, it's just a performance test. And what, what can we bring into our ballywic of supports for students that allows for revision and redemption? And it's an important notion, and we'll hear that there's more collaborative work going on than ever, that group presentations should count, that students should have a choice. Okay, for this essay, it's longer, more for the teacher to prepare. Maybe there is a fill-in-the-bubble assessment they can choose, or an essay, or in a PowerPoint, different ways to show their mastery. We've had teachers who even just have a page that's devoted to show what you know, that has not been asked on this test, show what you know. And I told this story, and Phil has heard it a couple of times, and Russell this morning, but it's not real world to expect kids to be one and done. We absolutely require reiteration, piloting. And that students shouldn't be asked to do these high stakes without a chance to redo. So again, harkening back to formative versus formative assessments, and looking at our grading policies. A problem we see across the country is this notion of a zero. And kids can't recover from a zero. Mathematically, it's worse than an F, it's worse, right? So you've got an F, and the points don't align. So kids can't recover. When I went onto Estancia's website, I was misled because I read the grading policies and it did state a 4-3-2-1 grading scale. And yet I was corrected by Mike, who said, no, 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 we've got zeros here. So to be rethinking the case against the zero and what we can do about that. So again, looking at assessment practices and grading policies is one area the school may choose to focus upon. Another large area here is social-emotional learning is climate of care. On the survey, we have this, this really kind of magic bullet question. It's the first one I look at when I look at the data. And is, do you have an adult to go to at the school if you have a real problem? We want that number, of course, to be upwards of 100%. For most schools, it definitely is not. We'll see where Corona Del Mar lands, but that's an important question to ask, is, do you feel you have an trusted adult to go to? There are a lot of different strategies to build a climate of care. It's interesting, it's not about knowing that so-and-so has a soccer game or your parents are going through a hard time. It's really about, is the homework load fair? Do I have a chance to retake a test? It's about those pedagogical connections to the school climate in general that students actually perceive as my teacher cares. And so building upon your advisory, and nod, yes, do you have an advisory in your schools? I know that there's advisory at Estancia, I saw.
Not every school.
We have it every.
Every school has.
Right.
We have a district.
Right.
Yeah.
So just some help with advisory in terms of the curricula and how to support students. We have some ideas for that. And then on to the E, and this is really critical for this district in particular, with the parent piece and reframing success for, for parents, really, for parents, that at the end of the day, it's not about the bumper sticker on the back of your car. You want to support a happy, engaged student and not really mortgage your child's adolescence You want to support a happy, engaged student and not really mortgage your child's adolescence for these future gains. So it's about educating around sleep, parent education, faculty, teachers, everybody in the community onboard. And you can read through that paper for more ideas, but you'll see there's a lot of different ideas under each category. This is one way we educate parents, is during our parent education, we show, we throw up the time wheel. This, we didn't invent this, right? You've seen this, but we really want parents to really consider what kind of life is your child having on a typical day? And the question behind this is, is your child trying to do more than a 24-hour day? And the answer is, yes, they are, when they count up all the hours. So we have parents go through and do how much time in school. They don't have control of that. Homework, extracurriculars, which they count those up, paid work. Now, some of your schools, you have a high level of paid work, working kids, and some not. Chores, kids aren't doing chores. So we talk about the nice, there's some nice research out by Whirlpool around empathy and how chores, doing chores helps build empathy. We've got, you know, kids in college who don't know how to clean up their rooms and get along with their roommate. So the importance of chores, unrewarded, non-paid chores. Media, we define as anything with an on-and-off button and a screen. It's a lot. Kindle falls under something else, reading, but the media piece, parents typically, gosh, 24/7, but the reality is, they don't know, and they feel this real lack of control. If the phones are already sleeping under those pillows, it's very hard, they feel out of control to get them back. So we build a lot of education around the importance of family time, of getting unplugged time with your kid. There's some interesting stuff, even having a phone out between a mom and a teenage daughter, even upside down and off, will actually carve in half what that child tells you. It's in the way in many forms, and again, affecting sleep with a blue light, lots of different first-person video games for our boys out there who are starting those games young, and the implication of not necessarily more aggression, although some of the research is showing that, but less empathy, that those kids are showing up with less empathy on the scales, playing those first-person shooter games. So we advocate all screens out of the bedroom, finding unplugged times, the necessity of regaining control. And we know it's hard, so we offer common sense media as a third point for parents to get a contract, to have it written down, that these are the rules of the household in terms of media, and having the parents model it themselves. Interestingly enough, Estancia was really interested in really looking at cell phones out of the classroom and coming up with some, we know some teachers are doing that, and thinking about kind of, in terms of policy, some schools have done that, where they've eliminated cell phones during class time. Put them away, kids are more engaged, et cetera. Unstructured time, what is unstructured time? That question's been asked to me before. It's downtime, it's nothing-to-do time, it's your kid can kick back and listen to their iPods and do nothing time. And we know that there's a sense of go-go-go and do-do-do, and knowing the research, if my kid comes home after a busy day, the last thing I'm going to say is, what's your homework? Get ready, you gotta go. But we know it's a first question parents ask when they roll up, is, how'd you do on the bio test? Even worse is, how did we do on the bio test?
Oh, yes.
Which is, you know, we have some pronoun abuse going on out there, for sure. But really, to give kids no questions about academics and a real chance to have this unstructured time. Family time in the research is really important. It's one of the, what we call protective factor. It's five, five days a week, includes weekends, 20 to 25 minutes in duration, majority of the family around the table. We used to say all the family, but it's really hard to have all members of the family, dual working parents and whatnot. So family time, we impress. And again, many come up with a very narrow amount of time on that. And then sleep. Lots of parents going to bed before their kids, so they don't know, they're guessing, and we talk a lot about how to address that. So they add it all up, and guess what? More than a 24-hour day. The next part is really around, we have our space framework, but we also have what we call PDF. It's not portable document format feeder or whatever, but it's playtime, downtime, and family time. And this is really kind of the cornerstone of our work with parents, that all kids need playtime, downtime, and family time. And this is back to the elementary schools where you start working upstream with those folks and really articulate that, you know, to have a busy, you know, little first grader running off to four extracurriculars is not best. What you want them is to have free, and they're actually little scientists testing their hypotheses, and they're more interested in the box and the present that was inside. So really cultivating all of those. And you'll hear from parents, well, I can't find my kid a play date, because they're also busy with extracurriculars after school, and bringing back and finding some like-minded parents to get back to the park for free play. So along with playtime is downtime. And again, I've kind of taken out the school and homework, because parents don't really have control of that, but the rest of the life, they do. They absolutely do. So how to make sure there's plenty of time for playtime? The research will say what's best is you want as much unstructured time as structured time for a kid during the day after school. So if they have a two-hour lacrosse practice, be great for them, two hours off. And that's really hard to do if they have three or four hours of homework, and they're trying to squeeze in a family dinner. So downtime includes sleep, and then family time, which we talked about, which is that protective time. So all of these really lead to a healthy and happy 35-year-old adult. That's kind of our line. That's what we're looking for, is to build that with that longer lens, that it's not about the race to the end of high school, and whoever has the best grades wins. That's what we're trying to stretch, is this notion of broadening that.
And that's one of the problems, I mean, we all know that's one of the problems, is I think some parents, it's not just competition, they feel guilty, like they're not being a good parent.
Yeah.
If they're not pushing, pushing, pushing.
Right.
You know, even though I think a lot of the time, in your mind, you're thinking, this just doesn't feel right.
Right.
But, you know, Sally over here is a great parent because her kids, you know, are doing 14 things, and so it's a parent, it is definitely a parent thing, too.
Yeah. It's really hard to take, be the first one to take your foot off the accelerator when everyone's zooming down.
Exactly.
And what are you missing? But if you know the research, and you know at the cost, what cost is this harming our kids physically and mentally, it's real easy to take your foot off the accelerator.
Right.
But it is, that's why this community parent education events are really important.
Crucial, yeah.
Crucial.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. So that's our PDF, playtime, downtime, and family time. And we encourage schools as well, faculty, to build in PDF in their classrooms every day, to build and play for high school, right? What does that look like? It's chit-chat time between an 85-minute period, get up. It is downtime, to have those longer transitions, to recognize our kids aren't on a schedule they have no control of. And family time, how do you build a climate of care within your classroom and those connections with kids? Finally, I want to share with you, this is kind of some protocols to engage student voice, I thought would be helpful to share with the board. Again, it's I wish campaign, something called Dialogue Night, Fishbowl, which you probably have heard of, Teachers' Shadow Day, and Digital Storytelling, which I just shared with you earlier in the presentation. So the I wish campaign is a real simple campaign, which I wish my parents knew, my teachers knew, my colleagues knew, and these you collect anonymously through a Google driver or whatnot. And it's a nice, you know, start for parents to see at Parent Ed, some of those student voices is front and center and easy to grab. And I love my colleagues knew, because faculties are stressed, teachers are stressed, and we know there's a connection between faculty and student stress. So how do we build empathy within a school staff? And that's through understanding some of the underlying issues of their own personal lives. Moving on to Dialogue Night. I have a whole protocol I'll send to you, but Dialogue Night is an evening program for parents, students, and faculty members to participate in an open discussion about the issues related to teen stress and pressure. We have skits. Usually, the Challenge Success two student, team members come back and start a Challenge Success Student Club. They get more kids involved, they do everything from a wellness week to a sleep campaign, lots of different ideas from our partner schools. But this is great, because when the parents come, it's typically in the library on the evening, they don't sit with their own child. And we prompt, we have some nice discussions around stress and anxiety, and everyone shares, and the students split off in the end of the evening, the parents split off, and then there's a common sharing. It really does bring to light some of these discreet messages going back between parents and students. So that's another protocol. A fishbowl, well, we love fishbowls, right? So fishbowls is an opportunity, you build concentric circles, right? An inner circle of about eight students facilitated by a very strong counselor that they trust. There's a lot of meetings before this happens, but typically you have a group of adults listening in on the outside of the circle. And some questions that are brought up are things like, how would you describe your academic experience here? What are three words to describe how you feel on Monday morning when you're coming to school? I mean, the students, we have, of course, ideas for prompts, but the students come up with their own, and you listen in, the faculty does, and then there's some reflection time later. So it's a really powerful protocol as well to elicit student voice. It can be done on a small scale or a larger scale. One of my favorites is Shadow Day, and this, boy, if you want to know what it's like to walk in the shoes of a student, go ahead and walk in them. And this is Shadow Day. You get some substitutes, you match up some teachers to a student, they meet before, right at lunch, they get a backpack, they go to the locker, they go to every class, they sit through the class, they try to do homework at night. Some have even extended to going to extracurriculars. So doing a Shadow Day is a great experience to kind of launch the discussions. Of course, without reflection, there is no learning, so the piece around reflection and that follow-up that the principal will have to facilitate is really key. What are some things you noticed? We have a nice reflection engagement tool. The issue here, I'll just let you know, is that some of the teachers feel a little self, you know, worried about other teach colleagues coming in and watching their practice, but that kind of unearths that, because best practice in a school is to have colleagues observing each other and sharing kind of their practices. So again, Shadow Day is another one. Digital storytelling, lots of different examples that we have if students are interested in conducting their own interviews about stress in their school community. So I want to just kind of lastly talk about next steps. Again, Corona del Mar will be coming to the Fall Conference in September. The survey will be pushed out shortly thereafter. We like to push out the survey when school has started at a normal clip, not right before major exams, or, you know, something, you know, just a normal pacing of the day. Team meetings, again, those coach meetings, support from the coach. There'll be some parent education and other faculty professional development. Spring conference will be typically, it's in April or May. And then we hope that all schools will solicit student voice in some fashion. So that is, I believe, see if I added, oh, I do want to share with you our book. This is Overloaded and Underprepared. This really walks through in detail the space framework. Every chapter is devoted to each letter, and we have some stories from, case studies from schools who have worked with us and made changes. So it would be one idea, if you were to kind of check out our book, and maybe the leaders to kind of read over a copy who are not formally engaged with us at this time. It's also a nice opportunity for faculty to do, you know, a PLC, to read the chapter on homework alone, and to talk about that as an example in climate of care. This is my contact information, should you wish to get, you know, in touch with me throughout the year. I welcome any questions that you might have, and if you have any questions, let me know right now.
I was gonna, the, while the focus is on CDM next year and currently.
Yeah.
I know, it sounds like there are a lot of things we can start doing at the other schools.
I think so, yeah.
Like these, I look at Annette, like putting out these white papers, engaging our PTA, because these Dialogue Nights, you know, this would be something that PTA should be in.
Yeah.
And, right, and the parent group, that, there she is, yeah. Those type of things, yeah, that we can start doing. So I hope we can talk about that and find ways to move forward with that.
Absolutely.
Because, you know.
I think once they hear it to you, you're not gonna be able to stop this.
Yeah, well, good, yeah.
You know, they're gonna, like Ruth said, there are parents out there that are still, when are we gonna, when is our turn? When is our turn? When can we?
Right, absolutely.
That was the one thing that I have heard, because I was an elementary school principal in the zones that feed into Corona del Mar.
Yeah.
And so I have some parents that are very comfortable saying, hey, Shar, what's going on? And Shar's like, I don't know the timetable, but they're both anxious for, when do we learn? When do we get our turn? Because it's like, I don't want my child to fail if I could have had this three weeks earlier. I mean, the parents have their own built-in.
Right.
I need to be, do what's right for my child. So they're stressed waiting for their turn.
One of the nice features of the Live Parent Ed is that afterwards, we push out a link for everyone who didn't go. So if you can't make it, then you can watch it on your laptop. If your spouse or partner couldn't make it, just so everyone's on message. And so that link goes out to everybody, and you can send it to everybody. It features Dr. Denise Pope, our co-founder, and she basically delivers the very same well-balanced student presentation. So that would be really helpful for you all to have. Lastly, I want to share, you know, one of the critical factors about building that time pie is student schedule. And we know kids are taking a schedule at Corona del Mar that they may not be able to handle. And I hear from parents who are pushing for the multiple APs, or for students who are pushing for it, and how do you, how do you get that to stop? How do you have kids make a decision? So many of our schools have instituted a course rigor and time management. I brought one example from one school. This is the idea where you require all teachers to articulate, what is their homework per night, and how many nights a week do they assign it? What is their summer reading? For example, AP Lit. What other kind of projects, major projects? When those are articulated, along with that, they do what's called a course preview. Do you all do that? Where all students can choose three classes from the teacher as they're doing spring scheduling, for example, and sit in on Mr. Coward's AP US History, and for 10, 15 minutes hear from the teacher, hey, guys, this is my 101, this is my syllabus, this is a reading, this is a homework, and you have some kids back out saying, there's no way I can handle that schedule, that, we're not gonna, this is not gonna work. And they self-select. So to do a course preview for your students, to allow them to choose, I have a lot of different examples of schools who have instituted this, they'll have a clear sense of what they're signing up for now. And with that assignment time management sheet, the number one thing we ask students to put in is sleep. They may not be able to put the nine hours, but they certainly should put in eight or eight and a half hours of sleep, family time. So it builds off our PDF model, so I'm going to pass that out to you right now as an example.
Thank you.
And I know at CDM, Ruth, isn't it true that the AP teachers all have a preview where kids can come in and find out exactly what's going, what's required? I don't know about the other schools.
Not every school practices.
Ruth, do you know when, I mean, is it in the spring, is it in?
In the spring.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
But I guess the question, Karen, and perhaps Ruth, because I don't have anyone yet at that level.
Karen's online.
Are, are teachers, are we then looking at the, I guess the question is, once they've had this preview, then is the, how involved is the counselor in looking and saying, okay, so you've had the preview, and you have, and you want to take not, you know, three AP classes, and guess what? That's 12 hours of homework a night.
Yeah.
Or every other day.
Can't be signed off on. Counselor has to sign off, a parent has to sign off, and the school has a waiver that says to the parent, who signs off? They will, they'll sign off, they'll sign off, that this is not a recommendation of the school.
Oh.
So you guys have a backup.
Oh.
This is not a recommendation, we do not recommend that the student takes the course load, and the parent has to sign that. Yes.
So once.
And I know it's gone through the process of the spring selection and the preview.
Correct.
So every student does this regardless?
Right, so I'll show you the examples, but it's, it is every student, and they rotate through, this is a, I'm thinking of a school that's about 1,000 students, that just went through it before spring, before fall selection, right? And I'll look at it, but it was every, they went through the classes, they were weighted in AP classes, because the other ones were just your A to G's, right? They got to go to their A to G requirements. So, and they chose the three they were interested in, they rotated through, remember I mentioned late start? So they had that morning, one of the mornings where they had that hour time free. They went through, they were given the homework load of each class. So take a look at page two, that's not the, from this exact experience, but that had been articulated. And then they went to page one, and they filled in all the hours of the classes, the sleep, and all of that. So the counselors have to be on it, they really do.
And I think this is part of a parent education process as well, because I know at Corona del Mar, I've been there when a, when the head counselor has, at a PTA meeting, berating parents about the pressure they're putting on their kids when it comes to signing up for courses.
Yeah.
And they tell them, they don't have to take four or five AP courses, they may not be able to do that.
Yeah.
Be careful. And the counselors then don't recommend it, but the parents then do supersede that and say, I want my child to take the five AP classes.
Yeah, it is all around education for the students as well. You know, it used to be 10 years ago that you could game the system and get into these schools that they all feel like they need to get into. It's not the case anymore. We're hearing kids even, not even getting to one of the schools with a 4.5 and a 36 ACT waitlisted. And so there's more kids applying to colleges, they're applying to more and more colleges, and there's some real interesting information. We were coming out with a white paper to launch your work on debunking the college myths around what makes for an effective college experience? Is it those name-brand colleges? And guess what? It's not. It's not. So that'll be interesting too, to push out to your parents who have that kind of linear thought around success.
So once the, so going back to this, and once the parent sign, I mean, you're actually having the parents sign?
Yeah, it's a waiver, yeah.
They'll waiver saying, we do not recommend, this school does not recommend this load for your student.
Then, then it's up to the kid, I mean, they take the class.
Then it's up to the kid.
Yeah, it's up to the, it's, the family ultimately takes the class or not based on your recommendation.
What's the, what, what have you found? Have you found findings? Has it been successful in?
Anecdotally, we've heard that the course preview is extremely effective in having kids march back out, you know, with the beep sound going on, I'm out of here, there's no way I can take this class. In terms of the time management sheet, we've found there's more balance, that everyone looks at a third point. To your, to your notion and to your, to your thought around parents, when you have a third point and you know developmentally those kids need that sleep, and you have it, and you look at the course load, there's no way they're gonna get it. We also talk about, well, let's say they're a varsity captain, or they want to be in the plays, the spring plays, how are they gonna manage this? So is it harkening back to balance? Is it possible? It is, but you have to be diligent, and it is dynamic.
How much pushback did you get from your parents?
For?
For signing and?
I'd have to ask the school that instituted that.
Okay, I would, I would love, because I think that's a fab, it's a fabulous notion that, that, that the, that the school is, is putting their foot down and saying, we're not recommending this for your student.
Yeah.
We know your student.
Yeah.
The student has, you know, great student, but?
Yeah, it's Carmel High School, it's, it's an interesting school, it's very similar to some of the demographics at Sancho, the Hispanic kind of, you know, but it has, anyway, Carmel. I will reach out to a leader and find out, and there's another school too, I have to ask Denise which one it was. But good questions. So these are some of the things all schools can institute, is kind of, now, the tricky part is articulating how much homework, right? The kids will say, ah, no, 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 it's not 30 minutes a night, it's an hour a night. So that's a whole conversation.
It also depends on the child. A homework assignment maybe, and if they do this much in class, then there's this much left over, and their teacher anticipates, but if they chatted during, if there's a lot of variables to that.
A lot of different variables.
But the bottom line is, if the teacher anticipates 30 minutes at home.
Right.
Then you better think, okay, as a parent, if this takes 30 minutes, or if I ask my child to do that, and it takes him 45, then I know he's got 45 minutes for that instead of 30.
Margaret, when you do check with Carmel, I'm wondering if they target kids in for counseling sessions that are over-scheduled?
Yeah.
And what kind of, what kind of support they provide those students, whether it's their counselor, or a social worker, or a school psychologist?
But how much pressure could that put on the child if they're going against their parents when their parents want? I mean, that's a big piece. There's not a lot of?
Yeah, what we're hearing is the students, actually, that say, I want to take it. It's peer pressure. We're hearing that students want to take it, and you'll hear parents say, okay, when you know the right move for that parent is to say, look, I'm looking at your whole, this is not gonna work in your schedule, it's too much. So, so there's a lot, so we're really looking forward to, we have the luxury of time working with a district. We always say, in order to, I was telling this to Russell this morning, we're reflecting on, you know, to move fast, you need to slow down, right? We want to slow down. We want to make sure we're intentional about all the work we do. We also want to make sure that we don't kind of go into this one area when we're not quite sure where to work, what, what, what part of the space framework we want to tackle. But that's the excitement that lies ahead. So we're really looking forward to engaging with Corona Del Mar and all of you, and again, feel free to reach out if you have any questions throughout our partnership.
I have a question to that. Our intense focus originally is Corona Del Mar. Are, are we open for the other principals of the other high schools to call, because they have a question, they're self-implementing, we're paralleling.
Yeah, for sure.
Corona Del Mar may be our tutors for the other schools, we do a lot of that. But they may want a direct question, is there any problem?
Absolutely, have them reach out to me, I mean, yes.
I mean, I'm sure they've asked this too.
Yes, yes, if they have a question.
I don't need to run the school.
Yeah, because what we have are a lot of different resources. So I'm here if they need any of those, and happy to, happy to help.
So how many, we're, right now, we're focusing on one school, but we are making presentations to all the schools.
Correct.
So do you have situations where you're working with the entire district?
You know, one district came in with four comprehensive high schools, interestingly enough, and they were working on a bell schedule change, so they did come in, and the superintendent was really pivotal in making those changes, getting some committees together, bell schedule committees and piloting and, and whatnot, and made that. And they just happened, all four, to enter at the same time. This year, we didn't have room, and I think there was more of a notion of kind of piloting with Corona Del Mar as a flagship, and then kind of filling it out. Also, kind of recognizing the other community, high school, Estancia, which our IP and our work definitely falls into that, but we really are looking at schools that have probably a lower free and reduced lunch demographic than Estancia, and just making sure that that was a right match. But I think the talk went, went well this morning for Estancia, kind of recognizing their differing population, noting that they have kids who are highly stressed with, with the APs, and then highly stressed worried about deportation of their families, for example. But yes, we've had districts come in one time, one time.
Mrs. Yel.
All four schools.
Yeah, I, I know with Corona Del Mar, and that's why this all started with Challenge Success, the parents in the community, everybody's clamoring for, well, what are the changes? What are we doing?
Yes.
And I've, I've told people, since I talked to you before, that this is not a short-term process, it's gonna be a multi-year process.
Yes.
And then they understand. I behoove us through you, Dr. Navarro, or Annette, to get out a summary, or maybe even put something out saying, watch this, watch this presentation.
Right.
Online. I think it would be, I think this is real important for the community out there to be able to see what's been presented today and just where we're going with this. So as one of the, you know, starts to communicating with the outside.
Again, so that the community realizes, and that this is a research-based.
Yes.
Needed shift, paradigm shift.
Yeah.
That we didn't just come up with because we have peer pressure from other school districts in our neighborhood for all of the change, you know, we're not changing the bell schedule because, ooh, that looks like fun.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and I think that the templates that I share with, with you, and you can just let me know the point person to share it with, will be helpful in having you articulate that, because you want it to be personal from your district, and yet, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel.
Dr. Navarro, should you go through your office, correct, the templates for the board?
Well, Russell right now is a point.
Yeah, Russell, Russell's running point, actually, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to, I want to just underscore something that Margaret said earlier, about this being an internal process that starts at the site and then grows, and then, maybe then, we look at what policy decisions need to be made.
Yes, we're not the.
Because, you know, to be honest, change never happens because of a policy.
Right.
You know, it has, there has to be fingerprints from everybody involved. So I think that, you know, as we go on and explain this, we want everybody to be part of the change, not to have the change done to them. And I think that's how we explain it to our families, that, you know, you have to be part of this. And it's not just us telling you how to live your life and do what you need to do, but more understanding how to have a healthy, happy child.
And I think the fact that we approve bringing on Challenge Success shows to the community that the board is supportive at our level.
Absolutely.
Because that's the goal, to be supportive, not direct.
But I, but I know that Annette is, will be assisting us in getting this information out, so.
Right, and I wish I could give you the whole kit and caboodle to send out to everyone, but I can't because of IRB or I, yes, at Stanford. So, but what I can do is work with whomever needs particular information, again, templates to help them with that co-creation, co-creating that.
The YouTube that you shared, that was really, that gave us a sense of where we were.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's pretty amazing, the La Quinera.
Something like that would help.
Yeah, and let me just check in and see if that can be, it's on YouTube, so it's kind of public domain, right? Right? It's not even a check-in.
I think it's really important that we continue to entertain these dialogues at the board level.
Yeah.
From the standpoint of continuing to have conversations and deep, meaningful of whether, you know, whether it's tackling the collegiate calendar and, and, you know, gaining that, tackling, having the conversation, and deep-meaning conversations about homework and grading policies, and the elimination of the concept of zeros. That, that is, that is so damaging to children. I just witnessed it this week with my seventh grade granddaughter at Corona Del Mar who got a zero in a class, because, oh, by the way, it was S-Back testing, and she turned her homework in, but it didn't count because they were having S-Back testing. Excuse me? I was like, I was like apoplectic.
Yeah.
So, but again, I think that having these conversations about where we as a board, where we as a district, on our placing our priorities. And, you know, not, not just at the high school level, but it's at all grade levels of saying, you know, kids should be having fun, they should be engaged, there should be activities, just for, you know, we need to go back to the education of the whole child, so to speak.
Absolutely.
And developing the resilience, and it's okay, as you said, successful failures. And I think that those conversations should be, we should be having those on a fairly, you know, maybe quarterly check-in.
And that's what I was.
And have, have, have those structured conversations for about an hour, hour and a half of, of, of doing the exact same thing.
Even having your four high schools bring in a couple of, I wish my teachers knew, I wish my parents knew.
Exactly, exactly.
Would just help funnel that direct student voice to your meetings.
Well, it's, it's a check-in. We would like a check-in, so that we know where our schools are.
Yep.
Not in detail, not exact, but just, what are the issues that we're thinking about now? How's it going? Just because we do get questions, and because we'd like to know, we, we need, we need to know the health of our schools, and what we can do to help or stay out of, so that they can take these great steps on their own.
I think a natural first place would be a little summary from the Fall Conference. I can share with Russell, or Kathy can come, kind of a couple of key documents, like the tree, they'll actually build a tree, a stress tree, that you can share, even the students, reps can come and share their experience, that would be really powerful. The next key point will be the survey data. And that will be after October. That would be another check-in, is to see your survey data, and understand some of the flags. And we also offer nicely comparative data. And again, it's like, it's like apples to apples, right? So we've got high-stress schools coming to us, so we always say, whoa, your homework may look a little lower, but, you know, so we also share the research in terms of where it should be. So, yeah. That'll be a nice next two meetings, I think, in order for Russell to share info.
I did get, if I may, I did get permission from the parent to read this letter, this young 11th grade, and if I could read it.
Yes, absolutely.
It's a, it's a fabulous letter. It's, it's called "The Letter," May 14, 2018. Dear Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Hath, Dr. Navarro, Mrs. Snell, Mrs. Yelsey, and Mrs. Flure. I have attended Corona Del Mar Middle and High School for the past five years, during which I've made and lost numerous friends, seen the best and worst of teachers, and observed the way students interact with one another. Many people claim competition was the main issue regarding Patrick's suicide, but that's not the root of the problem. The real problem is that this school is entitlement. Students are entitled, they exclude others, which is the issue. When I started here in seventh grade, I realized that people I had called my friends in grade school would not be my friends here. Therefore, I embarked on a long and exhausting journey, which has made me a person I am today, shy and afraid of social confrontations. We've been, we've been hearing, oops, I'm sorry. Come back, come back, okay. We've been hearing that if you see someone sitting alone, to talk to them or ask them to sit with you, it's what Patrick told us to do. But the writing of one student cannot break the culture we have created. I'm telling you this because I have sat alone, and only then do you realize that at Corona Del Mar, you are alone. My story begins in seventh grade, a few weeks into the school. I ended a friendship with someone who I'd made friends with for many years. We had different views of who we envisioned we would be at Corona Del Mar. At last, she was mean and didn't care about my feelings, and I left the new group of girls she had abandoned me for, and over the next four months, I sat alone at break and lunchtime. During that time, I observed people around me. I would sit on one of the benches in between the 200 and 300 building, where people would see me. I hoped someone would say something or invite me to sit with them. No one ever did. I thought to myself that if I just asked a group of girls sitting over there, I could sit with them. No, I realized I couldn't do that. I would just be some strange outsider who wouldn't fit in. No one was going to help me get out of this situation. I had to do it myself. I'm shy. I have been, I have been ever since the day in preschool when the police officer came in to tell us never to talk to strangers. Yet somehow I gained the confidence to ask a girl who I talked to in PE if I could sit with her at lunch. It was one of the hardest things I ever had done. That was how I met my first group of friends. I often wondered if it was necessary. I'd known many people from my elementary school, but I didn't approach them. Why not? Because I don't know how. And that's the answer. We don't know how to communicate. When we see someone sitting alone, we ignore them. One is, is, one reason is because we aren't good at communicating, and we don't know how to, what to say. I'm pretty sure with most people, the problem is, we don't want to have to deal with them because they obviously don't fit in, and therefore, they wouldn't get along with our friends, even if we invited them over. Of course, a Corona Del Mar student would only have thought this if they weren't totally, utterly oblivious to their surroundings, i.e., only staring at their phones or thinking about their first-world problems. I've talked to my friends at other schools, and I confirm that the situation at CDM is an anomaly. I have a friend at Modern Day who told me that this story about a new student who didn't have any friends at the school. She sat alone in her car, but was told that wasn't allowed. Then she decided to eat in the bathroom, but faced the same problem. Finally, she decided to eat in one of her teacher's classrooms during lunch, and eventually a girl, a group of girls noticed and invited her to be their friend. These are the types of stories you don't hear at Corona Del Mar. So why is this a problem? It's a problem because there are still students sitting alone. There are still students who don't know how to talk to one another. Why is it still happening? It's happening because we don't know how to break barriers. We are too self-absorbed to talk to people out of our general group of friends. Additionally, not everyone wants to get to know everyone, and that's why they don't talk to them. This needs to change. We need to be better people, we need to be nicer to one another. Sometimes I hear students talking about making plans, and often I hear someone say, oh, sorry, it's for our group, or, sorry, there's not enough room on our bus for you to come with us. This is exclusive behavior that needs to stop. So how do we change? What do we start to change in the classroom? First, teachers need to stop having students form their own groups. For a shy person like me, being told to find someone to work with is scary. Everyone has friends in a certain class, will end up working with them, leaving everyone else to their own devices. This alienates students because friends, someone will always feel left out. There's always someone thinking, I wish one of my friends was in the class. Second, students need to have a randomized seating chart, where they are required to sit next to another student in either groups of two or four. When groups are too large, shy kids are outspoken, and when there's odd numbers, someone will be left out. These seating charts should also rotate quarterly. Third, teachers need to incorporate team-building and fun games into their classrooms. Most classes I take are lecture-based, and it's very taxing to sit and listen to an hour and a half of pure lecturing. Teachers can use this opportunity to reinforce what they just lectured on. Some things that students tend to enjoy are Quizlet Live, Kahoot, and team-building activities, such as figuring out how to build some sort of object in competition against other students for some sort of prize. A prize that really motivates students is extra credit. But since teachers aren't just giving out extra credit every day, they should come up with some other rewards specific to their class that just would be just as motivating. When it comes to these rewards, teachers need to reward students who are actively participating and making an effort to work together. It shouldn't always be the smartest or fastest student who gets rewarded. This would promote student working together and encourage them to talk to one another. Fourth and last, teachers should also break up their lectures with worksheets that reinforce what was just learned. For example, worksheets with word banks, where students are required to fill in the blankets, helpful for learning terminology. Or worksheets with questions directly correlated to what was just said, and have answers that students should be able to find from their notes, which students should be taking. If one student finishes early, have them ask their partner if they need help. When both students are both done, encourage them to talk to one another and get to know each other. They may have more in common than they think. They may have more in common than they think. Another problem at Corona Del Mar is that students don't want to talk to each other because they have social anxiety and, like myself, do not know what to say. An idea for this, that I have for this is to do two-minute drills in Class A. Two-minute drill, this when a student raises their hand to find, name a news headline for extra credit during two-minute period. That doesn't, that reward doesn't have to be extra credit because the point is having students use their phones to look up facts about news instead of just going on social media all the time. This would be helpful in conversations because students could bring up the facts that they've researched and discussed with other students. Corona Del Mar needs to focus on teacher communicating, communication skills. Further, ASB and leadership groups need to have more event, have events during break and lunch to promote inclusion. For their rallies, if students volunteer or, student volunteers are welcome, there needs to be some sort of form that goes out over school loop asking who wants to participate and have their names added to a list or a Google form, because in the past, I've heard that people get into the rallies because their friend is on ASB and it's not inclusive. CDM needs to appreciate the shy students. Too often, our opinions are left out of the conversation because when we apply for leadership positions, we're not seen as the type of student who would make a good leader. But the truth is, by only taking the more extroverted students, the introverted students have lessened chances of getting to know their perspective in conversations and thus their views are not, are viewed, aren't able to be expressed. I also know that not every shy student wants people to know their point of view. We don't want people to give us too much attention because we fear the spotlight. We fear being judged and having people disagree with us. When we talk in class, we fear not, we're, we fear we're not being heard or making sense because we're so nervous. Why else do you think I'm writing an anonymous letter? I also talked to my friend who goes to El Toro. When she was driving to meet me, told my friends, you know, the people who drive around here are mean.